Welcome everyone to January 22nd, the Strapper's School Board Meeting. We were in the public, well, in the public, no votes were taken. We discussed personnel matters and evaluations. So first, I honor Regina. It is a pleasure.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And this is about what we just named, a nation under God, invisible, liberty, justice for all.
Alrighty, gender review, the color comments, we will open color comments right now. The time is a couple of weeks, and these color comments open until 7:30. Anybody have anything to say about the agenda, anyone change anything, editing? I was thinking, Rob, I would like to vote, move the budget before the informational discussion, because we're gonna get some budget. That's. Alright, anything else? Okay, so, may I have that certified? Alright, any questions? Very good. Alright, seminar expenditure and review budget.
As always, we still identify various issues from some of the lines. There was a non-certified versus certified retirement issue that's being looked at right now. Just found that we applied tax course to a supply line, so that's gonna be certified. I'm already being certified, but it wasn't. You see any other line you want to talk about? Oh, I've started encumbering money as well. You see they encumbered mine now.
The, um, on the first, first page, so about a third of the way down, sick day reimbursement for regular ed, that $22,600 line?
Yeah.
Is that something that can be fully encumbered? Because that, that's for the retirements, right?
There are no retirements.
Oh, oh, that's right.
Okay, so I think that's gonna be completely unbalanced.
Nice.
Well, there is a retirement issue, but they don't qualify for our retirement package.
On, I guess, page, so page 22 to 47, with E S Y that are overspent?
Yep.
This, is that something you were looking at a few months ago?
Budgeted better for next year.
Oh, okay.
So this was a misunderstanding piece, some numbers that were put in, but they were putting like 2.1, and I thought that meant $2.10 or whatever, but it had like $2.10 or some weird thing like that. So the numbers I was given last year were confusing, and I misbudgeted based on weird numbers they were giving to me this year, the ones that are in 25, ones that are not.
Right.
We shouldn't have this problem.
That's good. And I did notice in a couple lines below that, there's some E S Y that is not spent, so.
Correct.
It's, uh, it's still good. About three quarters of the way down that page, the health insurance buyout for counseling. Did we have someone come in and party here?
We had somebody that last year when we did the budgeting, there was no buyouts. This year there are buyouts. So it's gonna go negative a thousand by the end of the year.
Okay, okay.
But we'll say somewhere up to, it balances out. I guess if I did that analysis of all the pay and benefits, we're still in good parts. We're still in good.
Um, on page 25 to 47, so, my, 57.4. It's still just like almost $2,000 of amounts have been moving in for technology. Because I would expect, like, whatever equipment they were saying for security or technology, you purchase, but I just wouldn't want it to be, you know.
That's a good question. Let me look into that. Because I do, he's purchasing technology stuff.
We have the audit, right? Do you pay for that?
Uh, we have the bill.
A couple lines down from that are dues and fees for the school board. Have they gone up? Because I saw it was 4,200, and we had expended 4,519.
It's also possible that something's there that should be.
Do you think that was for the, um, conference, something that took, why it took?
Let me do an analysis of that line.
The school board expenses hasn't been touched yet.
Right, and that may be, when I went to that conference.
Yeah, so I know the dues and fees covered is for our association, and it's possible that context caused that error, and I could do that. Let me do an analysis of that, and we'll get back to you.
Going back to page 24, about halfway down, is contracting services, elementary vision. Is that something, because it looks like barely any has been used, and do you know if that's something that is not gonna be needed in the future?
Or, I'm not sure its current status, let me, um, talk to, what's about that?
I think that is, we just do, change every year.
If that is one of them, so it's possible that students move away, or it's possible that those just haven't come in, you know. Sometimes we have companies that just kind of give you a big chunk of something. Find out about that, hold on.
Page 25, um, we still have almost the entire mail put on attorney fees.
Uh, because I don't charge, you guys aren't doing anything this year, that's why I said next year we should make our attorney lines one, and to look at the S A U, it's negative.
Yep.
Um, at the end of the day, hopefully the two lines don't get exceeded, that's the plan, but I'm not doing much with the board with the attorneys right now, there's no negotiations going on. It's mostly S A U questions. Some of the other questions have come from the board, but they're coming through me. We're still just marking down as S A U. So the S A U line is definitely negative. If you look over it now. S A U, oh, it's, um. Legal expenses are on page 26, uh, it's 23.20, 53.30, and we're at negative 5,139.05. So it's taken away from our line. We leave the lines as they are, we don't transfer money to any other line with true representation of how much we spent on a line.
And this year, or this upcoming budget, we do still have that?
Yes, provided to one, provided to one legal line, so all legal will go through that one line.
Okay.
And we pay that new amount, the amount of both the other lines and mine.
Okay. So, because it is a negotiation year this year.
They go super smooth, so I have no problem.
That's right. Oh, yes, so on page 28, rubbish removal, which is just about halfway down.
Yeah.
Uh, it looks like we had budgeted 15,000 on that line. We've expended 5,500. And there's only $600 remaining on the balance, yeah.
Assuming it's a calculation error.
Yeah.
I, I would say the expenditure is accurate, the balance line is a calculation, the expenditure is a report, we call it from a report. So I'd say we've spent the 5,545.05.
Yeah.
The balance line just must have other calculation problems, so I'll get that fixed.
Okay, um, I figured that's where it was. Just two lines down from that, heating plant maintenance facilities. We've expended 9,000 of our $10,000 budget.
Yeah, I'm wondering if that's where the hot water thing was.
I was, that was gonna be my question also.
For that money back, so let me look into that, make sure if that's worth it.
That's it for my questions.
Hey, anybody else?
No, sorry, see, I think, well, we have to do, um, you know, we have promised 20%.
Yes.
We actually, when, we actually spent a little bit more, I remember there was a difference of 32,000 dollars, so. You know, so that, so we spent more than, we sent the power to 1120%. I know that, knowing that we were going to get money from the conservation committee, and hopefully it offset the revenue raise, but I'm just saying that that amount was over.
So I think you counted, I think you counted it since, so.
We did?
I think so. I think you did the three numbers.
Okay, it was.
And whatever those payments were, was the actual payments, that's what we, to. We're talking about. We, I don't think it is, I think we talked about this before, I think there's something back there. Let me look into that again, because I don't remember. I remember, actually, this is the one that I talked to Greg about. The, I'm pretty sure it is the dishwasher. And he said it has to be placed in a line. I don't remember his exact explanation, but I'm almost certain that's the line that he said is, that is accurately represented, it has to be there. But, um, once again, I'm not, it wasn't the dishwasher, that's what I'm trying to say, I can't remember what it was, was it the dishwasher last year? It was last year.
Yeah.
It was something this year that we did, and he said it had to go there. Wait a minute, what did we do this summer? It was, uh, it wasn't, oh, it was the windows. It was the window job. I'm almost certain that it's the window job, and, and then he said it has to go into a line, it looks negative, but it's, um, we got that money raised from the warrant, or was it the warrant? What if we take that from?
The, the window is 87.
It didn't work, but we, we took away, remember they, they fundraised at different amounts, different ones. Let me look into it again, I'll get back.
Right, 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 yeah.
So, and the dishwasher would have to be at the food service.
It was also last year, so I know that's not that.
So then, when, at the, if that was placed in there, but it's, it's raised for a warrant article, is the amount from the warrant article then added as income?
And he said no, because it's counted in another part, so the warrant articles show up somewhere else, and he says it would count as, I don't remember correctly, he said it would count as like two places or something like that. Let me get it exact, I'll get it actually in writing, so I bring it to you, this is an area that, it was def, that I was like, I don't.
No, it makes sense, it has to be, it's somewhere, it's just more like word than balance, each one.
Yeah. Call our income, right, it'd be our income line.
Right.
Yeah, so that's, that's at the bottom of the sequential report, so I'm assuming that's where it, let me verify, and I'll let you guys know if that's any. Good, great question. And I know I did ask about it, because I'm like, what the heck?
On page 29, um, what is contracted services intercom?
Yeah, it, it is overdrawn, because we didn't know that our intercoms were broken, as they were, so this past summer, um, the intercom guy came in, and just to inform that it wasn't working at all, or something like that, I don't know what it is, he came in, and he's like, this is broken, this is broken, this is broken, this is broken. We looked at all of it, like, we gotta get it working, so he came in, did a repair job of everything, came to, probably, uh, 21.20.
Was that the, was that the motherboard stuff?
No, that would be the fire panel.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
This is the intercom.
Okay. Alright.
Okay, anything else? And meanwhile, we're gonna go back here, those parent and aide aide's notes, approving minutes from our last meeting. Per good. Alright, so, um, we need to have a motion to approve the public and non-public meeting minutes from January 8th.
I move that we approve the public and non-public meeting minutes from our January 8th meeting.
Okay, we have a second? Okay, discussion? I'm glad that we have the line numbers.
Were, were we missing, this might be a little separate, oh, I just dropped my memory, at our last meeting, were we missing December non-public minutes?
Okay, alright.
It looks good.
She's been working hard on this.
That's good. Yeah, I'd like the indentations to under each chapter. Okay, did I see anything? Wow, there you go.
Oh, I just noticed something on page 18. Sorry, um, this will break, approve at $1 per hour increase to administrative pay, it's, I think administrative is.
Yes.
Sorry, I just noticed that, I could write this too, I'm so sorry.
I, I just also noticed something on that same line. Uh, Lebrack.
Yeah, I know. Line 144, it said add a fee.
Looks good, they were very good. Anybody else? Good, alright, those. Eric?
Yes.
Jess, Katrina?
Yes.
Kyle and Debbie, yes. Good, good, good. Alright, I'm sorry, we'll go back to our agenda, and next, we have the action items, the action items.
First of the action items is to approve, um, while we do the resignation of James McCormick, he'll be resigning, in fact, for February 7th, 1/25, as our facilities manager. And he's still here, he's still working, but it'll be his last day. Good, you think, for his service.
Okay, we have a motion?
Sorry, I, I move we accept the resignation of James McCormick as facilities manager, in fact, February 7th, thank him for his service.
I think I just get it, second, discussion? I, I think we're, the, uh, facility committees are working on maybe your job description at a different position.
And that would have worked.
Great, okay, Katrina?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Jess, and Kyle, and Debbie, yes.
Next will be Kayla Tasker, is a current full-time para-professional working here. She has requested to go to part-time, which we, very support, and that, uh, we're pushing forward, and she's continuing on with us. So we're asking for her to be approved up to 30 hours a week, same contract, same salary, it's just a, a hard time decision.
I move we accept the reclassification of Kayla Tasker as a para-professional from full-time to part-time, up to 30 hours a week, um, everything has prorated, from form here.
Okay, we have a second? We have a second discussion? How many does it take? Alright, Katrina? Yes. Eric?
Yes.
Jess, and Kyle, and Debbie, yes.
Uh, next, the daytime custodian position didn't work out the way we had hoped, and we have a new candidate, I'm looking forward to tonight, Daniel, who's been working with the district, as a evening substitute custodian, and, uh, he is looking to come on board as our part-time day custodian. In fact, he's already been, I believe, settling in that role for us, right? Because our daytime custodian position, uh, failed. So, from what I hear, he's doing a good job, we're looking forward to having him grow into that position, so I'd recommend to the board that we allow Daniel Faljo, uh, to build our part-time day shift custodian position up to 30 hours a week. Do you have any questions on that? It's 1750 hours.
As soon as I find it. I move we accept the nomination of Daniel Faljo for the position of part-time dayship custodian, up to 30 hours a week, um, at a rate of 1750, to be paid for on the general fund.
We have some, we have a second? In the discussion? So, if you're working as a substitute, like tomorrow, will you hold on a day? Or?
Correct, well, he'll be a part-time, part-time employee, but, right.
Alright, Katrina? Eric?
Yes.
Jess? Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes. Okay, we're gonna go into the budget, and.
Did you want to do facility use?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that, yes, let's do the.
So, next, facility use, we have two facility use requests. Uh, the first one, coming from Camp Invention, is Audrey Dolan's program, running from July, I think that's 14 to 18. And it's a 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, it's about one week. There's a lot of order here, let me see. Here we go, um, she needs a custodian, so that's what she's looking for. And that's during the summer, so we have daytime custodians during the summer. You want the other one too?
Yeah, we have, we have two, we want to vote together?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, I think.
Second one is the annual town meeting from the town strapper, they would like to utilize our gymnasium on Saturday, March 15th, 2025, from 7:30 AM to 11:00. They're looking for, um, they need a custodian and I T support.
Okay, um, and, so maybe the I T support, is that the?
Jay, would you help? That's the thing that I don't know, in these things, that, um, we used to have a fee chart, like, if you would request a custodian, you paid this, if you requested a I T, you paid this, but I don't.
I think we have, we have a custodian fee in our facilities use policy, I don't believe we have I T.
Yeah.
How about we, let's do, let's do these one at a time, then, because I think the town's now just. You wanna do Audrey's first camp adventure?
Yep, so I move we accept the facilities use request from, uh, Audrey Dolan for Camp Invention, as presented on our form, on the facilities use request form here.
Okay, do we have a second? Second discussion? Okay, um, it's a great program, you started last year, then you actually expanded.
It was a couple years, it was a couple years ago.
Alright, so, so we'll go down, Eric?
Yes.
Jess, and Katrina? And Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes. Alright, so for the town, I, I just wanna say, I do, I just don't remember, remember asking for the I T support, so is this new?
I brought it up a lot.
He did, I remember him being here last year for it, I don't know how it was handled.
Yeah, so what we do, is that part of his, since he is?
I, I think I, I think I called him, I think I said, sit here on Saturday, come and play on Monday or something like that.
Okay, alright, are people okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, it's, you're.
You only had one pocket to put in the other, right?
Yeah, so I don't wanna overcomplicate it.
Okay, alright, so now let's do.
So, I move we accept the facilities use request as presented, uh, for the annual town meeting on March 15th, 2025, from, uh, our selectmen.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, discussion? So, Rob, you'll take care of working out the I T. Alright, Eric?
Yes.
Jess, and Katrina? And Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes. Alright, so now, we'll just skip the, remind us to come back to the informational pieces, and get to our presentations.
So I did provide you tonight with a new budget packet, because I'm able to identify some lines that could be adjusted. And I've been, I shall, we had a student that we were being charged for there, or, appear to be being charged for, therefore I put them into the budget as a regular ed, non-coprogram student, ex-student. Um, I did notice that the bills were not including that student, so when I contacted the school, they said that student was drawn quite some time ago, it was back in September, and we had just not been notified, uh, child, so I'll draw, uh, that's not, that's not a concern there, but as a result of that, that cut $19,000 in the budget. Since I was changing it, I went ahead and added the 500 into the accessibility thing, into that line, and I also. Yes, yes, I reduced the trash by a little bit, because we know we're not gonna spend that much money at the time. We didn't know that, but now we have two dumpsters, it's gonna be a dump a month apart here. Every now and then, like, end of the year, beginning of the year, we might have to drop a second dump, but, or dumpster on the property for a couple of weeks, but that won't add either remotely, probably, in the year and a half, so, another, you gotta know, so lined all that down, I was able to get the price down to the new bottom line, and I was able to get the second increased out of the whole. Hey, 75.
That's what it's 75. Alright.
Was it 77?
So, if we wanna just put the new packet, just quickly, um, come through it, so page one, we have our articles, and I know that there were a couple of things, I think you more corrected last time, I think we had on the, or something like that, right?
In the first paragraph, we had articles 2.5, and it was 2.4, that's entrusted.
So article one, we have two school board members, we have two, uh, our, two, yes, we have two. Alright, so article two is our operating budget.
In article three and four, we have that question about, what was the final balance of those capital funds, and those that have paid, to, 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 to identify the final balance.
For articles, yeah, if we could, that should have been there, 2,000.
1349.
1349, page 45.
And page 44, just so you know, I had fixed it this, this morning, chopped the bottom three lines for some reason, because of the way it was looking for the time. When I printed it into your packet, chopped those three lines, I still don't know why, but I just sized it down a little bit, and showed up, I just sent it over. So the final packet, it was off.
Okay, we wanna move to the budget drivers. Katrina, did you have a question about paras?
Yeah, so, um, we probably touched on this last time, but I was curious, if, so, there's no salary or benefits included in the special education services, um, but I was curious if we increase the number of para positions as a result of special education, and if that should be requested, instead of, and I, and I'm not sure if it is, but if there's, if there's additional positions, um, within salary and wages, would we wanna move those to special education? Instead, if there is.
Special education services doesn't include wages and salaries, because, um, that's captured in the wages line, so I know it's all employees are captured in the second one down. The first one, I don't put employees into, if you want, loads out, and I just have to take away, of course, there's no salary benefits, and I have to add whatever you want to add. The number of paras is always influx. I mean, this year we gained and lost some paras, so I don't know if there's any after, when we capture that. Simply because it's constantly in flux.
Yeah, I think it would just be, well, it would be from, I guess, based off of what we budgeted last year to this year. If, if, if there is a difference from last year, I just, in my mind, it was like, oh, we've had to add para positions, but I don't know where we're at currently.
So the other way we can do it is we can, instead of saying no salary and benefits, we can say no salary and benefits. And any additional, additional special education employees are also included in the salary and wage line.
Or salary and benefits in the next line, remember.
Because, so obviously every year we have an increase in salary and benefits. Because then the costs go up and per the CBA, right?
It's the same number, twenty-one, two part-time and one part-time student.
Okay, sorry.
The numbers are the same.
If we had added, say, two full-time paras, say we had, then those additional salary benefits it being in this line would almost inflate that to look like our.
You know what I mean, CBA and.
Yeah, I did, where they were, but maybe our level that is only a big concern. I didn't know that.
All right, so let's, can we see anything else on this, the budget drivers?
Is it worth putting in a note in the retirement payout? Because if we're going to include that in the budget, drivers say that it's, there was a savings in the twenty-four, twenty-five year because nobody actually retired, had that money budgeted. I don't know if it's worth.
I, I wouldn't, just because those two years I've not.
Okay.
In other words, if you had a twenty-one or something, you have three more people retired this fall in here, it'd still be a budget of all. That's the one thing that it's a separate, it's a separate kind of pay issue that's fun. You don't know when it's going to happen, so you want to point it out every time it does.
Okay.
So that you're keeping on top of it.
Technology. The twenty-eight thousand, what is our total technology? This has gone up twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Technology. Problem with technology is we are up thirty thousand, sixty dollars and seventy-two cents.
Oh, what is the total cost?
Oh, the total cost of technology will be two hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
Okay, so we're two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. Of that. Okay, whatever it is, close, close enough, okay. Of that, there must be fifty-six thousand dollars worth of qualifying items, which will hopefully be reimbursed twenty-eight thousand dollars. I just want to be able to explain.
That, that's accurate. That's what was in the technology plan that I did with all of that.
I just don't want people to look at it and think, oh, we're going to be reimbursed with fifty percent of the two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. It's fifty percent of.
I put in front of it, I put it approximately.
Right.
Approximately twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and five dollars.
I just wanted to put the total of what the actual qualifying items. Anybody else think, if you have the next page, I think the budget drivers.
Does everybody understand the actuarial utilization?
Okay, so the. So.
What's that?
Health retirement.
It is an actuarial health.
Okay, so the health retirement account, we negotiated last year or two years ago, right, for the contract. Where the district was putting in a percentage. What was our percentage? Yeah, because.
Ninety, uh, yes, ninety.
Okay, I think we can use you a bigger floor from what the HRA is and then what we budgeted. You know what I mean? So like what the actual.
Yeah, we weren't sure, I think healthcare, please, I think we budgeted a whole lot of that first.
Right. Just if we update this, that HRA, we'll learn about what it is.
Great.
Okay, we have it. Good. All right, so the dam looks good. Anybody else you need? All right, let's go to the next one. All right, so we're going to look at budget. This is going to be our annual budget walkthrough before we. I don't want you to hear it next week.
Page five, that's that part of here where the way up to the top, I've got that fixed as well, so that should appear right in the line.
I like the bridge or something that you do against it. Isn't it easier to read it? The bridge or something.
That would be, if it's just a plus on it.
Yeah.
Have a question.
Maybe because the cover or something, it just seems just. You know what? That must be what it is, really. It's just like the, the. Okay, I think if we say. Oh, sorry, page nine, um, now, classroom text. We have special. Five to eight. Ten thousand dollars. So what did you say?
It's really I-ready. It's the curriculum to take here, so we, it covers everything that has to do with I-ready.
Okay, so which five grid now, so it's the I-ready, so it's like the license.
So that would be the, the annual cost.
That's, that is, the cost is coming here for the entire I-ready package, which brings five to it, which is the online enrollment. The in-person components and unit payment.
Is the I-ready, two-year-old purchased.
I-ready has different types of components that are all included in the price. So it all comes together as one cost. They give you an estimate for each player a year for everything included. So that one was the only thing that we took out of it, so ten thousand is accurate. Those are sixteen thousand, and they were given to me. But that's because they include a lot of professional development. We just don't feel like we're going to do that because we're. Another one, the twenty-four K, if you recall, the K four was an estimate, but it turns out that that's the correction that they're leading in, so the right number. They're going to put together a whole thing. I don't want to jump into that. I'll definitely mistake something and get something out of it. We'll let them.
So it's the new grid.
Yeah, probably in March, they'll be having to see the second part.
That's the new grid. But, um, page eight, that's the line top.
Um, just, I think it's.
Any, any.
Oh, not, not. Good catch. I mean, that's actually a real word. I've never seen it spelled.
So you will know the answer if that question comes up. What's included, five to eight, ten thousand dollars for I-ready?
Probably the higher math. Everything that is goes in that I ready. Detailed list, not on me, but it's everything that I ready. So the curriculum we're using this year, completely included all that stuff from this year to the next year's. The only thing we took out of it was the professional development.
The initial cost was much more.
There's always an implementation fee, and the implementation fee covers installation, initial training, whatever. So yes, it was a higher lead this year than it will be next year. It would have been very close, though, if we had had professional development, it's, it's very expensive.
And if we, I don't see in the classroom workflows, I know some of the most most students use consumables for that. I don't see that we purchase.
So what it's an I-ready.
If it's I-ready.
If it's not, yeah.
Oh, so it should be included in the.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
I ready comes as a package.
Okay.
You know, the paper, the rest, paper, that's all part of that. And you tell them what you want, and you pay. K four is, I just don't know yet, but that's all inclusive as well.
Page ten, contracted services. There are, there are actually, is that recreational services?
We use Northeast Passage for those sort of. We are going to talk to the strappers and see if there's an alternative. They may or may not be, whatever there is, that really would be safe.
And are you able to, obviously it's a eight to, um, are you, a great.
Oh, great, well, yep, yep.
A two minus thirty-two. Are you able to not, any, any, identify, identify with information? But if somebody says, well, I don't think para is, might be considering a, on a different model. Why is this here contracted? So how would you answer that question? Okay.
Lissa will be there, guys. I don't, I will not take, unless she needs backup, I won't take a special question.
Right, okay.
Actually, this is all like a budget here.
Yep.
She's not normally at the budget.
Yep.
I'll move it in here.
You might want to just ask her.
I can't, I won't.
Just, just so that, I'm just reading it, saying, what would I ask?
I'm wondering, just as a respectful addition against for those students there at another school.
And they might be.
So on page nine, the salaries para elementary spent. Just to match the, the student support center, because the one in general that is listed as point five. And this one says one PT. So maybe if they both matched at point five, if people could recognize that it's the same thing. And then maybe put that point five student support center para after the driven by student IEP sentences, so it's completely at the end.
We actually subbed it out to the office. So last year, the money was to the office, right?
Since, but, um, on proportional page three seven. More flooding down. Five, hopefully, additional technology. Um, so twenty-two thousand dollars imposed. And then this fifteen of that's with interactive displays on these. Seven hundred thousand left. I see intercoms on there.
Cameras. That's for actual, so the other thing is a service call. This is for actual, but, so we have five.
So is, was there like, um, as far as intercoms go, whether there was an additional ones that are being repaired or?
Like new installments.
No, I just was not, not this year. So it's only this one line, the top self, the E rate, and the last line, um, picture of software technology. It's only about, so that was a fifty-six thousand.
It's in other packets that I had where I have the exact lines that just come through. It's all actually, some of it's coming from above, there's a hundred. You know, there's at least two things up there. Contracted services. Audio, visual, all. Software, all. Absolutely. Can I potentially interrupt?
Oh, on page one second.
Page what?
Twenty-seven. Um, I thought, I didn't know what sort of question, but a lot of things are, um, just in the technology area in general, so. Obviously, the chrome replacement plan is self-explanatory. Um, five stations in, there's two lights computer. Also, what is the next explanation?
It's all of that technology pack.
Okay.
Which in your.
All right.
But basically what we're doing is we're trying to add some, you know, Microsoft workstations. So that students are better prepared for a program. So when they go prepare work with the platform, they go to work on the Microsoft platform. And it's a little struggle with it. So we want the technology class to start, meaning in some of that, some of the information in particular. Also, all the things that we're elaborating on, so just starting to process a couple of those.
And then cell booster?
Yeah, cells don't work anywhere. So the work that's said back to me is that we have actually run ourselves.
Right.
I was gonna say that, that might change very soon.
Before you pick the cell phone.
If we, if we don't do it, then we'll, if we end up not needing it because the tower increases up if that panel is.
Yes, oh, they don't pick our, the service provider first, until you see how good the service is from. Yeah.
But like I said, we may not need it sold. It was wrong.
Um, I know at one point, we, um, the budget, we got this year, previous years had included, I thought, funds to expand. The Wi-Fi service, especially like outside. Is that right?
Yes.
It's still, okay, I feel like it's been in the budget and just has never actually happened.
So we have to increase, well, outdoor Wi-Fi off of the S A U building because the buses have to do stuff, log in, different activities in the log. And they can't right now because we don't have any Wi-Fi, which means the buses is dead. So we do definitely need it there, but we also want for Wi-Fi heading towards the annex so that the outdoor classroom can also access at that point. So outdoor Wi-Fi.
Yeah, no, I imagine it being like, I mean, at all points, outside the building, it would be agree.
I'm not sure it's going to cover every, I, I think we've got a certain focus areas and maybe that's what we're passed to, I don't know what the pass to, I can only say about what's going on right now. We definitely have.
Right, I mean, like, once again, I remember that being part of previous technology plan was, I, and maybe it was part of a grant, if, that, and we just were off on, I don't know. But I just.
Unaware of any outdoor Wi-Fi right now.
Yeah, right, oh, yeah, no.
So this year will be, this year will be a start in the right direction.
Okay.
You might see it again next year, but it'd be for a new area, and we have new racks.
So on our attorney, at the legal lines you combined?
Yes.
Uh, it looks like you removed, removed five thousand. From twenty-three, twenty, fifty, three, thirty, oh, oh, two, for this S A U expenses. And we increased it by four thousand in the twenty-three eighteen.
We talked about that a while ago, and I can't remember what the talk was about, I just, I think we felt that was not based on actual.
Oh, okay, I just wanted to make sure that wasn't a.
We were looking at, you looked at what the actual is from negotiating here, though, that's one.
I like it because we're at four point nine nine percent right now, I don't want to, I don't want to tweak anything or anything in the other direction anyways, so.
Do you remember the conversation way back?
So at the very bottom of page twenty-nine, the salaries for the admin assistants, for all our other salaries, we list the dollar amount for all the other.
Hourly?
Hourly people, so whatever was decided upon last meeting. I think it was, I think it was twenty-one.
Yeah, that was that on.
It's, it's not on any of them, I found the other two places. Or it's not on the other admin assistants, it's on the custodians, it's on the, um.
So you wanted that?
I, yes. So it's, it's the very bottom line on page twenty-nine. On page thirty-two, it's the second line from the top. And on page thirty-four, it's the second line from the top. And I think that's, I think that's the only.
It's only look, I'm sorry, it's only look at.
Yes. Yep. The heating plant line maintenance that's dogged us for a couple of years, looks like it's, it's, uh, good now. Where, where that contract with the, with E N E was a little more than we had budgeted for. Looks good now.
Forty, four places. Oh, yeah, I know one of them. Good idea, I should take them on that. Thank you.
Yes, um.
Could my report, what was getting my report of this?
That's exactly what I was thinking.
Do you want me to do that? Are you all worked at that point? I was gonna wait till I was done, but I heard you both talking about plowing. All right, I'll just skip, uh. So plowing, um, I had Tyler, the new folks had asked last time what's kind of going on. I had, I wrote Tyler an email, he came right over, uh, we had a great sit down, talked about it. He said he's doing what he can to minimize it, he said the problem has been that the ice has helped it re-form over night a lot. Which has caused him to have to come back in the mornings to do, uh, re-treatments. Uh, so that's definitely been part of the problem. He said that he's a taxpayer, he gets it, he's going to try and keep those costs as low as he can. But that's definitely been the hard part, and then of course, we just had the storm since that last conversation, so how will we bring it up even more? As we've talked about it, um, it really feels like it might be better for us to consider not doing it by storm, not doing it, doing it the way we've been doing it. But doing it by the winter, per year. He said if he had priced us out for that this year, we're within twenty-two thousand seven hundred dollars. Um, which is obviously more, but on a heavy winter, that would have been nothing. On a light winter, then you overpay, he says, that's kind of like, you know, a lot of people will reapply things and whatever. You're, you're running a little bit of a risk there, but at the same time, you never have to worry about it again. It's a flat rate, it covers your winter. Um, and we could try and, uh, you can offer R and P that way this year if we wanted to, I just wanted to let you know that that's his recommendation. Because he said it's impossible for us to skip a sanding if it's needed, right, or it's helping. He said, you know, you can come up that hill and, or start slipping all over the place, it's going to be a problem, so. He'll do the best he can to keep it as minor as he can, but at the same time. I think this is a better way for the district to think about plowing, instead of really pricing it out by a winter as opposed to by storm. And that way, you just never have to think about it again, you have a very easy number to budget for, you know exactly what it's going to be. They'll build what they can to buy new payments throughout the winter. Um, and no matter, and he says, they'll be your, like, everyday checking, because they want to make sure at that point that they're number on the top. So once again, I felt that was a viable alternative, I wanted to make sure you were thinking about it. Uh, right now, we have sixteen thousand five hundred in the budget, if we were to go to the twenty-two seven, which he says is going to make some difference relative to what we were next year for as well. Um, then we obviously would have to increase the budget, but I wanted to make sure you had that opportunity.
I, that's a big jump for an unknown, I'd rather stick with the sixteen-five. Um, and I think we had even talked about that facilities, I don't remember if it's been. Um, and I think we had even talked about that facilities. I don't remember if it's been brought up in here yet. But at some point, we have that side-by-side, and maybe we can do some sanding with that at some point in the future. So, I don't feel comfortable going to a fund rate right now. I don't know, everybody else, obviously, that's what we're.
Yeah, I just curious where you're at.
I don't know our current because I'm not sure if we can live with the most recent storm. It was probably a salt sanding.
And, and it reflects exactly what you said. I looked at it, he, he was here three times salting, but it's like, twice on a Saturday, we have basketball on the Saturdays needed, and then if it melts and you have to come back on Sunday, you know, it, it.
So he did, he did talk to me about the weekends and the evenings sometimes, and he, and he was asking about it. I said, I don't believe those are always us. So one of the things that we are gonna have to keep in mind is that we do salting for our rec, we do salting for other town meetings. You know, we don't charge anybody anything, no, we use our facilities, right, except for a private organization, but the problem is, it is costing you additional money. He's been called because there was something going on in the evening that wasn't school-based activity, he had to come back and salt, so. He says it's not a lot, but he's definitely had to do it a few times this year, where those probably weren't school events. Um, so just keep that in mind too, that we don't charge for anything, but at some point, you might want to think about saying, we wanna use our gym, we've, we've gotta consider those things. And maybe it's an agreement that if, if it happens to be icy that day and we have to salt for you, that you're gonna pay that fee, but I'm not trying to let you want that uncertainty. So, it might just be an interpretation to a flat rate on the use of our facility. I'm not suggesting it isn't, I'm simply letting you know that we are, we're definitely covering that right now, since that's.
Yeah, it's hard, 'cause I've thought about that too, like, oh, there's one there on the weekends, it's not important about keeping, like, say there's a big storm, or like, that my mind goes to, oh, they don't necessarily have to come multiple times throughout the storm because it's on a weekend. But if our facility gets used quite a bit, so, um, you do have to keep up with it, I think. And the other thing is, is I think that, um, the property is kind of used as like a, like a general community property as well, like, where, if there is a storm, like, who's to say that, like, a family isn't gonna come, come play in the snow gear, or use the playground? We wouldn't want the grounds to be unsafe in that instance, and so even if there is something scheduled or not scheduled, it's best to, we don't want someone salting and falling on an icy parking lot on a Sunday.
At most, I'd be curious if it was possible to find out, like, how many times they were called out for specific instances.
We talked about two with me that he knew was, that they were on Saturday. And when he was talking about them, I said, I don't think we go for arguments, I think they're bad, but it's. Jim, Jim was notified and then Jim called the service. Because, I mean, we're called and we're like, hey, we got ice on the pavement and someone's gonna be on a property, and you start worrying about, what's your primary, it's gonna look right, so. So they notified Jim and then Jim got in touch with them and they came over.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause I mean, if there's, it's, every time I notify, there's always people here.
Definitely not recommending we do charge, I'm simply saying that would be one thing to think about, is that we are paying for services whenever people use our buildings, but maybe that's just the cost of being a community.
Well, the community thing, or, I think the community is, and the community would want to pay for losses.
No.
Somebody called the insurance.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you had that in front of you, because that was something that came up, and I'm like, oh, that will impact the budget.
Okay, so we're all set with keeping it at the sixteen thousand? Do we have anything else to talk about with the budget? Are we all set?
Uh, it looks like the actuals were nineteen, seven, forty-five.
Thanks, Eric.
It's okay.
We all budgeted twelve, but we spent nineteen, so we jumped to fifteen, thinking that would be enough, because we thought that could be friendly, but once again, the cost of everything is continuing to climb. So I'm not sure fifteen will be enough this year, but sixteen-five will, will be, but if not then, that's the thing we just gotta keep in mind. So I think at the end of this year, we'll, we'll see at least a pattern to the company, and if those prices come in that, right, that's, that's. We, uh, purchase, uh, ice melt for our walkways and get those by forty-pound bags. And we buy them, uh, in quantity from a company that we actually get with fairly decent price for. But everything else is handled by the truck that comes around and sprays.
They, they do make, they, they do make sanders, they, they make smaller versions of. They also make, um, they also make, uh, hitch mounted, so there are different options.
Only concern I have there is, you're not gonna want just sand, sand doesn't do anything, you're gonna want the sand salt mix, and then I'd like my view of, where am I putting it on the property that doesn't, you know, wetlands around us? Like, we'd have to put in a pad that contains that product, so that it doesn't saturate the ground.
We also, and I'm just thinking right now on the spot, we could get creative and have, go right down to the town shed, if we purchased some and had it there, and they could load it up for us.
I haven't found the town, this would be something that we have to talk about, but we asked them about the fuel, and the answer was no to that, so. I'm feeling like there's a separation there, that that yard is for their purposes, not for ours. Um, once again, I'm not saying no, I'm simply saying we had a little bit of, um, it's like with the trash as well, the transportation, they've said no to us about things, so. I feel like there's a separation of powers, if you will, and I'm not sure that they would be receptive if it was coming down filling it side-by-side with the salt sand mixed into our parking lot, but once again, I don't know that for sure.
So the mix is there, is it just sanders?
It's sanded salt.
They do a whole bunch, so why couldn't we ask them? Oh, we don't want it to be, we don't want some dump here around our.
I wouldn't want it on our property unless we're properly prepared for, because once again, we are surrounded by wetlands. I could see us coming with some EPA finding that we infected the wetlands with too much salt products or something like that, and then also making this.
I think it'd be worth talking about, maybe it started in the facilities meeting or something, so I'm not tying up.
Alright, okay, you guys take care.
It is promising, potentially.
Okay, um, so are we ready to go on to page forty-four, the estimate, I think it's just. Do we have any changes to this page, other than the operating budget, right?
Just the operating budget, which impacted networks, filtration, um, total revenue. And like I said, the bottom three lines, it does say thirteen, forty-nine.
So this was. Good.
It was a swap talk as well.
Great, thank you. So that's the tax impact.
Add the extra button.
And people would know that over estimated, what they're paying for them, so they can. With increases with everything.
Next four pages are just sort of.
Um, as we're looking now, this brings us to the capital reserve. I think it's good for us to have a discussion now. The facility committee wanted to talk about the capital reserve, you know, that we should have in our budget, so. Oh, just, did you come up with something? I didn't know.
No, that's, that's.
Alright, so what are people thinking about what? Did you have a recommendation or what were your thoughts?
Well, what we had done, if you look in that packet, we had some expenses over the past years that we had put in there, which are. The fine line, yeah, yeah, so, yeah, right on the second page there. Um, in the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen year, it looks like we spent roughly a hundred thousand dollars on a boiler project. Um, twenty-twenty, there was that eighty-eight thousand dollars for the leach field repair. Um, the window project was eighty-seven thousand dollars, ju- just this past year. So, we kinda thought of the bigger projects we could potentially encounter. The unanticipated stuff that, hey, we have to fix this right away. It, it's looking like there are roughly hundred thousand dollar projects. Um, my personal thought is, I wouldn't wanna see that go much below two hundred thousand dollars, if at all. Um, that way, 'cause we all know that more expensive things can arise, like gym collapsing, gym wall collapsing, you know, 'cause that has happened. Uh, I don't know how everybody else, you know, we're at like three fifty, right, uh, I'm sorry, what are we, two fifty right now? Two fifty-five. I feel like with what we're generating, or what we're putting into that fund, I, I feel two thousand is a good number, uh, two hundred thousand is a good number.
I agree with you. I was thinking of these two, and then I thought, you know, people complaining about their driveway and their parking lot, and then I thought, we have to drain sinkhole. Or, or we gotta do, we have a giant sinkhole, you know, we can't have the houses full, we can't have cars, we definitely hear that. We have the well, which.
But once again, that's just a filler, there'd be comp to be required, so once you start adding all that in, you're all covered.
So, I, I'd like to, just because I've seen this, something.
Yeah, and, go ahead. Uh, okay, so, on our couple pages up, we had some short-term slash medium-term goals, which would include the water lean-to repairs, um, water filtration equipment replacement, looking into some pavement patching and repair. And then the outbuilding preservation projects, which would, you know, re-fix the siding, maybe replace some doors. With, with what we have in there for a balance, and if we agreed to the two hundred thousand being not what we wanna go below, we, what we have and what we're gonna add this year, if the town approves it, would tackle quite a bit of that stuff. If not all of it. Yeah, it, there's a possibility, a good possibility of that.
We'll be doing a lot of that work. The garage, like this garage picture, that was gonna be done this fall, but we said, oh, not. Then the water lean-to was gonna be done this fall, it's a hopeful line, and those were, the pricing wasn't that big for those. But the, the neutralizer with the water system, we're really need figured what it's. Uh, some of the other, the repair of the siding on the sugar shack.
Yep.
Those are gonna start that up, but I still think we're, we're gonna go for a hundred thousand dollar, I think we'll have money left over, honestly.
Yep.
So, I sent these to the facility committee, um, Kevin was able to go out today, and he took off a large piece of the siding to be able to work at the sill, and, um.
Yep, you got it solid.
It was, it is solid. This is, uh, he was surprised. This is pressure treated, he places it in the bottom. There was a piece of sheet metal protecting it underneath the siding, so that's probably why it was so well protected. So from what he, from, from removing it, he expected to see it, like.
Nice to see that.
Yeah, so it may not be, you know, but this is only one section he removed, because.
But that's.
Doing it for a lot of.
That's also one of the back ones. That was one of the batteries, so, in fact, that's solid, I am confident in that. So that brings us back to, like I said, that was the project we were gonna do this fall, which we can hold, we can go back to, working that between next summer. Getting the water going to the garage, sugar shack, all these different projects, I'm hoping we can get working on those, because we're all like, just not have the outside buildings open for that place.
This helps really good by the way, all the visitations, right, the flow of it, they're trying to connect there, like the introduction about the money going into, um, in the middle of the go expense. And you wanted to show the windows, because that was a really, yeah, project. The balance is actually a little.
The only, the only thing on full I'm thinking of, yes, is when we put the pavement on the last slide, because. Yes, I think we had ordered, I think we had put pavement as the furthest out project. Yeah, and I, these pictures show a need for, for repairs and that stuff, so, I don't think it'd be a, it's a it's a responsible use of the money to do these preservation projects, definitely.
So, I guess I have three comments for the history. Would it be possible to specify that in nineteen eighty-five, the capital reserve fund was established specifically for, what the article actually said? Cause she, uh, you could just simply in that parenthesis, say, most years since the fund was established in nineteen eighty-five, like, she's got a little piece of that to carry over. Um, I was just saying, just they were more.
The actual, the actual article, yeah.
When the fund was established specifically for, I mean, you kinda say, um, you kinda say in this, that it was for all improvements and future improvements and repairs or whatever. So, 'cause I remember last year's budget meeting, they were like, what is this actually for, you know, and there was an answer, but not for sure. The other thing is, I agree, two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand is good for, for it at work. Is there any way we could, I know we're kind of close for the actual town meeting. Is there any way we could get like a rough word of magnitude on replacing estimate from someone, maybe not Bob, for bid to do the project, just ask for a quote on replacement of stuff we need to replace with the water system? Say, we wanna do this, you know, in twenty twenty-seven, or whenever we're gonna put due on that. Say this is the current projected cost, but it's not an estimate.
We just have to invite them. So, the second one has already said, the guy that knows everything about our system, he's very intensely knowledgeable about it. He's more than happy to come out and have a presentation with the board, let you ask every question you can dream of asking related to our system. Uh, the most important thing from this perspective right now is that neutralizer, because it's adding margins back into the water. So that's the number one priority, but everything out there is old, everything from our pumps to our filtration, except for the few baths or whatever it's called, those filters are relatively minute. The other filters, filtration systems are all relatively old, all the pumps in there are old, so it's like, anything can go at any time. He says what they tell people all the time, their, their buy is about fifteen years, and most of our stuff is closure. So, but he said, you don't have to replace it, just be aware that for rights, you're gonna have to replace it on an emergency situation, rather than.
So, I mean, if we could get someone to, or get that specific company, and say, to replace all this that's going to us. Ballpark, exit over, so we can present them at the town meeting and say, this is our next project, this is how much we want. We want to maintain minimum fund balance for emergencies, and then we could get a, you know, quote for our next, whatever you guys deem the next most important project is, to say, you know, this is the next project we want to complete this time, right? You know?
Yes.
We know that the water system, we did the entire package, and it was a, it was a large dollar value, but right it was under a hundred. I'm pretty sure it was like, yeah, I'm pretty sure it was under, but it was a lot of money, it was a lot of comments. But he did do us a, did a quote, and we're not one time, probably out of there.
Yeah, well, I mean, we're, we're just, you know, rough order magnitude, not a, not a, just how much we're gonna spend exactly. Right, so if we wanted, if we wanted to keep two hundred thousand in there, we propose putting fifty thousand in this time, and say, we'll spend down to the two hundred thousand dollar mark based on doing this project this year. And that'll kind of, you know, set up cadence for maintenance.
And so that could be done in around this week or so?
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I mentioned the three that I know we can do, the house, the sugar shack, the lean-to, and the garage, all three of those.
If the water filtration system, um, two hundred thousand dollars, well, you mentioned, would he be able to do that in stages?
Yeah, he, he had it all broken down. We actually already did one stage, right? We already replaced the salt mechanism this year. When that broke, we finally, we replaced that, so there's already one piece of it that's back there for us.
So if we say we have two hundred thousand dollars to spend, to spend down this year, who puts the fifty thousand dollars in, right, we have before two hundred thousand. If we're doing some of these other projects in the house, then we do phase in it, right?
Yes, um, I, I I know exactly what you're saying, Kyle, um, and the time, we're definitely up, up against a time crunch, but, um, what I, I think, specific, or definitely prioritizing the water lean-to, and then seeing how far we can go with, um, with that money, with the water system. And it might have to be phased in over a year or two, but I, I know, I know, I know the direction you're going, and I agree with it, um.
Yeah, at least they, you know, the last quote we got was this, um, that's not the current quote, but...
Yeah, yeah.
And I do have a payment company that offered to come out here and do some stuff, but they said, let's wait until the ground is clear, and it's not negative six degrees outside, so it'll probably be later this spring before they come up to do that evaluation, which might be after the end of the meeting. But there was a company that said they would come out and help me better understand what's going on. Some of it, it doesn't look that bad, but probably the leach field was replaced, something like that, but there's other parts that I want to...
So the, the water lean-to and the water system, it couldn't start.
Yeah. Yeah. I, you know, I feel more comfortable not knowing exact numbers at the district meeting, because those are so important that we're gonna, they're gonna need to be done anyways, and even if we don't know the exact cost, it's not gonna be wasted money, you know?
And the facility, I mean, you've been working on your facility, the facility that, then, right, with working on all the systems, and then kind of, like, and what next step?
It's, it's a lot of concept right now, but this
You guys have worked this together.
What, what you're seeing here on paper is, is, um, is kind of like the action direction right now, um, but, yes, that, that stuff is all of the words, and getting that information about the water system is part of it.
Do you have more talking points about the water system? We talked about how water either went earlier.
Yeah.
It's costing us money. Is that a dishwasher?
Yes.
That's what I'm petrified about, with that dishwasher, it's getting damaged, and all of that stuff now, you can't see inside of it. We don't know if that's what, so the washing machine isn't quite a year old, and the pump, the water out machine, it wasn't part of it, all of it, car.
This building, this wall is disgraced.
Are you talking about the garage?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, like I said, somebody ran into it, which caused the problem, uh, that's our belief, but then it's gotten worse and worse in the last year or so, and like I said, it was supposed to be a fall project, but then we put all, everything on hiatus while we were waiting.
That, that second garage picture, it looks like there's a lot of old weed whacker damage too on, on a lot of our buildings, on the siding, um. I guess, I guess a good goal for the water, and a lot of people probably agree with that, say, we want to, we want to have the water to a state where your kids won't drink it and not go home saying it tastes bad, you know?
And, and there does a lot of equipment, uh, essentially damage.
So taste at this point should not be a problem out of our wellers, and those reasons has it on each of our water wellers is perfect. So the water, there's such a history there that nobody wants to drink out of, our staffs don't, they gotta do, oh.
Um, did you ever happen to get the numbers on, like, I'm curious, like, what the dollar value is on water?
You skipped over it.
Yeah.
It's actually there. Um, it was five gallon jug of water, it's five ninety-nine each, and like I said, I can't find that rose, any ground, so. Uh, the box of paper is thirty-five ninety-nine.
So how, what, how much do you think we will, are going to spend this year in handling water?
Oh, I, I don't, I'm sorry, that I don't know. She buys them, I think it's in twenties, probably. And I know she just placed another order, so that'll probably give us all the jokes. I don't know if they'll take us all the way through, so, like, the first order seemed to have taken us almost halfway. Um, but, I don't know, we might have to do another small order before the end of the year, so it's six bucks.
Anyway, Jess and Eric, you both have been really nice to talk. This is a lot of work. You're both, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Yeah, really appreciate having you.
I was right, I'm not sure.
You're seeing all some talents. Thank you so much.
So are the only, to be clear, the only editor adding what the one that's about to do, what the, like, or...
Yeah, it's just...
And then email.
Specific language of...
And then, yep, they'll, uh, take that, and then we're always...
Yeah.
I, I think that's unfair.
Historical expenditures for...
And for the agents only. Very nicely done. Appreciate all the work. Alright, so I think we're, um, I think we're in the packet, right?
Um, you get, you pay fifty-three or fifty-four, but you might not need to.
Fifty-three, are you gonna update that for the district meeting, you're gonna update it to the, 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 the...
Correct, and that will be one less, like, it's four eight nine, so it's six and a little bit five. So that will bring it down by one, because that is true. Actually, it might even be two less, because, um, CBNA, um, had a senior withdrawal, so it's possible that that will be two less, because I haven't seen a CBNA.
And child, those were to show...
And, Rob, on our, I guess, this is just a quick hop back, because I meant to say earlier, but I forgot, but on the Cole Brown expense for the, this year?
We're in the budget, the budget.
In the budget expenditures, Cole Brown.
Oh, the expenditure.
Yes, I'm, and I'm, I apologize to hop back, but I missed there, and I...
Cole Brown, regular or special ed?
Regular. Can you tell me what line that is?
I can't, I'm moment. Uh, Cole Brown is eleven hundred fifty-five sixty-three, there, there's a...
And I, I see we encumbered and we're at a zero balance?
Yeah, we, it's a spending hole, it is close.
Because I know we're on the right number from what we have for students, I know we always have a few extra in there.
But we don't this year, though, and, once again, if somebody just withdrew, then that will help us.
Okay.
But we should be right on budget if we go all the way through with the current levels.
Okay, that's it for that.
Just hoping nobody gets that one.
Right.
Okay, alright, so let's go to the last page of our packet, page forty-four, to get our cost, the most recent cost per pupil amount. So we've gone up quite a bit. And you can compare us to the surrounding districts, to get a idea of where we stand.
I think I covered most from the annual meetings, with people are alleging, and just people saying, why are we always at the bottom? We're not anymore, we're not in the middle. I think that that's probably a better place for us to be. I would anticipate a lot of that increase in twenty-three, twenty-four was due to the increase in our salaries, because we really did do a lot of work on that, but we've also had a significant increase in special ed as well.
And also our enrollment, so, cost per student.
Fantastic, monitor, um...
Yeah, I don't even... Okay, I, I have a, a question, just guess. There are, I think, one point four million people in the academy. Guess how many students are paid twelve, I think it's four, or so, yeah, so, not many students, too. Closer than I would think it would say, hundred sixty thousand. One point four million, only a hundred sixty thousand. We've gone down, aren't the, the number of students in the state of the country, we've gone down bad. Yeah, really, yes, the age, the education's gone up, and...
Still a long way apart, four years ago.
Except now. You know? It's, yeah, that's something, I was very surprised with that. Okay. So, we're all some of that, so, Eric, what else do we have to do? Did your work? Okay. Right, so I just want to make sure, oh, no, people can do that, we have to, we want to talk about the agenda from the budget hearing. So, the dam, standing here, we do the presentation, so...
They, they don't, have a presentation, so they're there to answer questions, well, that was, if you want something more, I have to, can't work, you go for them.
And what, what they showed us...
The biggest thing's kind of like, I think, the cost section, and trying to direct.
They've already sent me the picture, I'm gonna put it up on...
Okay.
What more, more I want from them, I would have to let them know. They're gonna be there, they'll be more than happy to do what I do, but they really, what I've been telling them is, they're there, they're unknown, right? We don't know what questions are gonna be raised by them.
I, I want them to have the drawing on the screen, to stand up there and explain the drawing to them. What, what we plan, what, what...
So you'll, they'll give a summary of where we're at, and then get then, kind of the process, and then where we've landed, since the last time we've had to have everybody.
Right.
And then, yeah, they can, you know, and explain what they can expect to see out of the property, once the product ran, you know, versus what's there now.
They did a road, they showed up explaining, like, where the kids would go, how we would, they were driving there. When we did the sidewalk, they showed where child, children who were not able to walk, we could actually transport them close enough to certain areas, because of what we're doing with the road there. So, to make a, I think we're trying to do a little bit, not so much wheelchair accessible, but... Yeah, things like that. I would, we just want people to understand what is happening, so they're not surprised. And I think the district meeting, it's, it's too much of a big deal to do that at the district meeting, but at least it's budgetary. You know, people will be watching, it'll be, be there, or watching at home, so, the people will be surprised, but, but, yeah. Right? Transparent, open and transparent.
I agree.
And the people have the traditional, the vibe to fire, open, moving in that one. Yes.
We go from sixty to a hundred.
Yes. So, we'll have the breakdown, uh, maybe one, maybe a little more about rewriting. We'll go through that, okay?
They'll be there, they'll adjust the way.
Yes, yes, alright, so I sort of agree with you. Alright, next, and I thought we could do your presentation, okay?
Oh, yeah.
Alright.
At the budget hearing.
At the budget hearing.
Not now, we just, I thought we just did it.
It's fine to stop it, so we're all happy to go along with that. So we're gonna do the dam, because they need to leave, so they want to just come and sit with us for a budget presentation.
Is it a question of this project, is it on the shared drive, we should be able to pull it up?
I'll make sure that Jay has everything on break. Because I have to get the picture up already as well, so there's gonna be a computer, it's, we'll, we'll be projecting, um, like I said, we'll just switch you right over.
Okay, so we have the dam presentation, work presentation, and then I'm gonna open up the questions for both. That was in front of the presentation. Do you, Trina, want to be more careful to, 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 but pick one special ed student, that you're sure of?
She's there listening.
I am being watched from, and then we already have some people doing the cover reserve for two thousand, they're gonna do that first. How do you read the warrant?
So you want to, you want to do, present the warrant, a lot of more?
Yes.
Okay.
Because I, I really think your presentation is important, so you read the warrant, and then do your presentation to explain why we increased it to fifty thousand. We want to extend that language here, so. Sure. Okay.
So if I got this correct, engineers go first, then Eric and Jess present the warrant, as well as their PowerPoint presentation. Uh, number three will be Debbie doing the budget warrant, number one, our number two. And last, basically, Trina bringing in one, and three on the sessions.
Okay, we don't have to...
Any other business?
Okay.
Or any petition?
Is everybody good with that? Good? And then what I, what I usually do is, um, so everybody else knows, just basically, no go, face the cage. And that's what we do, is we do the budget drivers, ask people questions about the budget, because that really impacts, that will lead to the budget of our sessions. And then, talk about the revenue, and the tax impact, and then a few plus, another question we can ask. And, um, will we refer it to you?
Okay.
We'll do the best we can. Alright. And Melissa won't be there, but she will be, you know?
You know, we... Would you like her there?
We do, I think, special ed, um, budget has worked so much. Yeah, I really think that it's better to have her there.
I'll ask her, absolutely. The only way she'll say no is if something happens, she won't know.
I mean, I don't mind.
Alright, alright. Is that it? And we're going to have, um, just like a, a thing, we both have a microphone for the people.
Yep, so.
And I think we usually have a microphone for us.
Yeah, we always have like three or four, whatever, and some microphone at the table, how many tables?
Um, well, now that we only have, we have Melissa. I think, we took a straight table last time?
We did.
So, we're just giving that, it's going to be applicable, right? Right, right, and then we have our secretary, oh my, you're, you're still our secretary, because I was thinking our clerk, does our district, yeah. We'll need the screen and the computer. Yeah, and all of them, and that was pretty...
Do you want this year? Every year you give me a different number, so.
You know what? Well, I don't need any of those respects.
No.
You know, I mean, if we're doing, normally if we have, like, a warrant article that's asking for something big, we have more people.
Last, last year was pretty big, and we had enough.
Yeah.
What, what did you say, thirty?
Thirty?
That's what I mean.
That's beyond all of us that are, those will be done, yeah.
I, I But it, is it gonna be the same, will it be the same packet? Oh, they could...
You've given me, you've given me some tweaks, so the packet will change a little bit from where you're currently at.
No, from where we're currently at, but from, we shouldn't anticipate anything different from the budget hearing to the actual district meeting, right?
Unless something comes up in the budget hearing, and afterwards, when you're meeting, in that post-meeting, you decide, based on what you heard, you want to make an adjustment. I've never, I've only seen it once, uh, where that was, seemed to be changing. Warrant articles have sometimes been tweaked a little bit, but to actually change the budget at that point is really late in the game. I can tell you, Greg already has... I can tell you Greg already has the current budget, and he's already creating the MS twenty-six, just because I'm on such a tight timeline. So if you do change something, you'll have to go and make some additional changes, but that's, that's life, he understands that.
So, um, that night, you know, after that meeting, and we've had a chair, we have another meeting to actually approve. Now, the warrant articles that are all printed, and we have to go into the S A to sign, right, and that's signed at that night. Oh, so you're gonna authorize that night, you think? Oh, so then we don't have to make some.
I've got two notaries, yes, they do now, all right, so.
Okay, so then we sign those, if we have a thin copy and we don't change anything.
And even if you do, I, even if you do, I can quickly remap it, get it printed, if you guys can sign it.
All right, you good?
Yeah, then you have that special, you can sign it for us.
Okay, so we're all set with your agenda for that meeting? And, uh, let's go back to Rob's information.
All right. Here we go, all right. So.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I, we have one other thing, I asked Rob, um, you just put together, I was thinking of the things that you've done to, um, address issues with academics and so forth, with, in this budget, and so Rob put together a little where some of the things that we've done, so.
I was gonna do it during another, yes, I have it, I was gonna do it during another, but you can put it down.
So, we're gonna use this during our budget hearing to discuss some of the things, um, addressing the questions that come up, or, we'll see how it goes. Maybe I'll summarize this after the budget drivers, before we get into the actual budget. So this sort of, I don't know if people, Rob, you did a great job.
If you see anything else you want added to it, just let me know, but really what the goal was, was to say, hey, you know, what did we add to the budget over the last basically two years? That has pos, is starting to positively impact various goals that we have set for ourselves. So just the highlight map interventions, the map consulting, the map curriculum, the additional map feature. Uh, and the Title I map tutor are all what affect map, E L A, we added E L A tutor. And, uh, further down for E L A tools, I highlighted those as well, like with the wisdom foundation, integrity, letters, these are all helping to address those areas. Behavior, we're talking about the student support center, the paraprofessional for the student support center, or the additional school counselor. Just to keep straight with the counselor, just so in case anybody, I don't want anybody trapped here. It's not a second full time position, remember, we posted for that, but what we got was an eighty percent versus four days a week. And that's what we still have going into next year, so I just wanted to make sure you don't get trapped in saying, we added another position, we did, we added another point three. So we were at one five, now we're at one eight, so, I just want to make sure that one's clear too. Uh, special education services have been vastly expanded, so, I mean, all those different contracted services. Tutoring, I noticed in there, the one-to-one phone book devices, massive update going on that, right? A ton of money we expect to share, as well as the new, uh, plan. And then the extracurriculars, unified arts, that's not really an addition, but I thought it was important to remind people that those programs are essential. Sometimes when people want to cut budgets, they're like, well, let's get rid of sports, or let's get rid of U A, or let's get, you know what I mean? The reality is, there's so much evidence now that that well-rounded student is much better prepared to be a citizen of our country. And then the last one I put on there with the two deans, it didn't increase our costs, but I thought it was important to make sure that people understood that that budget item, I think, is having huge impacts. So, if you think of others that you want on there, let me know, and I can definitely crack the ones.
We still have nineteen school classes, I think, that's important. So anyway, we could also use this, remember, we did that last year, I think, or before, that we also, that we did that little, uh, presentation. So last year, we talked about things that we had been doing, the positive things that we've been doing, we just, we did the. Okay, yes, okay, so I thought, you know, maybe we could, as we worked through the district meeting, we could take this and do the same thing. Because I think people really liked that, had a lot of positive impact, about doing that at the beginning of the meeting. I don't know if you remember, we stood up and, it was from the first time that I think we did something like that, where we really started off talking about all the positive things that we had done as a district.
Didn't, didn't we have like a slideshow going at the beginning?
Yes, you just created. Oh, oh, the slideshow with the photos.
No, it was like, your photos of, of stuff.
Okay. All right, so, thank you, Rob, and you.
You asked me this morning, you got it today.
Well, I was, I mean, I started brainstorming, but it's like, we haven't uncovered something yet, to talk about, like, what are the good things that are in this budget? People always laugh, like, can you do it to cover?
Debbie always has something to ask.
Well, you know why, because usually Wednesdays, I just, I totally dedicate to paying for the, my coin starts. Anyway, all right, let's go to.
Go back to the informational, all right. So a question was asked about the cost breakdown of paper and water, I know we briefly talked about it a second ago, but let me just reiterate, five gallons of water is five ninety-nine each. The total number that we purchased for this year, I don't know, but, but once again, I know that she applies them in batches, and she's purchasing her second batch, so I can try and see if I can get an actual cost. And then the, uh, Adrian box of paper is thirty-five ninety-nine each, those are obviously the prices she just got from the market today. Um, the emergency generator, so, I met with Chris and Dean from the Hampshire Homeland Security Emergency Management, who were the chief Johnson, I want to say it was about a week ago now. Oh, right there, Tuesday, January, and then, in that meeting, we talked about the fact that this is really gonna land on the backs of the town. I have no authority to apply for, to ask for, really anything related to this grant. They explained that there's a huge, um, requirement before we can apply for, which is that they have to have this hazardous material mitigation plan. Now, that was posted back the last day in August, for like a five-day review by the community, and it's working its way to the system now, so the review's done, it's been built, it's been reviewed, it's now in the system, but when we checked the other day, the day of that meeting, I can't remember which one, I think it was Dean, checked with his colleague, and he said it just went to Homeland Security, or sorry, to FEMA, and it takes up to six months per FEMA, because they're so backlog. So, we may not be able to apply for any grants for a while until FEMA says yes, your hazardous security, um, sorry, hazardous material mitigation plan is where it's supposed to be. Now, they could of course come back and say they want corrections, and if they do, then that clock can start all over again, so. That requirement is required prior to us applying for anything. Once it's approved, the emergency manager director, which is Chief Johnson, will need to apply for whichever grant we're gonna apply for. So it could be another year before that application can even be submitted, it's, it's hard to say at this point. If, at the timing works beautifully, then we might still be able to apply, a lot of the due dates for the applications were like this spring. So if things were to line up, then maybe. Uh, is it possible that the FEMA will require an emergency operation plan for the town of Stratford, if they do? Which would cite us as their emergency on location, like this is where they go for emergencies, if they do, then that will be yet another layer that will have to be accomplished, but they, Chris and Dean were clear, that's not something that's always required. We're a small community, the, um, hazardous mitigation plan, and just us saying, you know, swearing on a Bible type of thing, that we are in fact the emergency location now might be enough. Uh, but he said, you, we won't know until we start putting the applications and we get feedback. If a grant's approved, it will most likely be a seventy-five, twenty-five, uh, matching grant. They would pay for seventy-five percent, but the town and or district would have to cover twenty-five percent, is the most likely way the grant would work. It's probably something we want to get versed in with the town's like, on, because if they're like, heck no, and you're like, heck no, then, then, there's no sense in even bothering to pursue it, because they're, they're fairly certain that that's the only counting grant that we're looking for. There won't be a hundred percent. It would be a seventy-five.
What was it, was it a hundred and fifty or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
I don't remember at all, it was over two hundred if I remember correctly, I feel like it was around two, two something, but, but once again, I don't remember for sure, I'd have to look at it. So he's asking about the bid that we, we only got one here, that was the other thing that Chris and Dean both told me was, we most likely will have to go up again, they don't like it when it's sole source. So most likely, we'd have to go up the bid again, and we really have to try and push to get home to people to put in bids. He said that also not a guarantee, a big part of it, he said, would we depend on how quick we would get an application, and he said, right now, it'd be timely. If we're another year out, it might not be timely, we'd probably have to do the R F D just to make sure we have updated numbers.
So that would be, if we're split of a town, we'd be paying like two hundred thousand dollars.
No, I think we'd be paying twenty-five percent.
No, I mean, I thought it was two hundred thousand.
That's ballpark, I don't know on top, but let's say it's two hundred thousand dollars, and yes, it's twenty-five percent of two hundred, we'd be fifty dollars, and then we'd pay twenty-five.
So.
If that's the way it works, but you gotta get the town to repay it as well, and tax theirs.
See, that's another thing that we're possibly, you know.
Before he wants power in the building to refund it, so I, one of the last questions I asked him, I said, is it a problem with school benefits from having this on our property? I said, the reality is, it's probably unlikely that we're gonna have some major emergency with our town, with our building, it's much more likely that we're gonna have the power go out three, four times a year, and that will be powering this, and he said, that is one hundred percent the expectation, that it's a multi-purpose generator, that it's there for the emergency aspect, but it could also take care of the school, and he said that's completely expected and understood. So we don't have to like tiptoe around it, or, oh my gosh, hopefully they'll find out, but we're gonna benefit from this, I know, he said, that's very much the way it works.
The town could have used it at least once last April, when, you know, when everyone was out of power, you know, that, that would have been very.
It would have been a nice place, he said, the school's open, there's a shelter, if you're out of power, you need food, you get water, you can charge your cell phones. It would have been nice to have been able to say our emergency shelter is open, but it's obviously, um, but once again, when the power goes out, and it's built, and you get a garden here, and you have no water, which means we're in trouble if the power goes out, so. Any questions on the generator? Uh, playground fundraising update, uh, speaking with our attorney, uh, we went, he said that I needed to go back and see if I could find a warrant article that had been passed by this school board at some point in the past related, if I was a one nine U dash B, I found it. Uh, warrant article number six in two thousand and ten, uh, was the exact language that he was looking for. So you guys did put a warrant up there, the community did approve that warrant, and it was until rescinded, and I could not time from two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty-four, that anybody rescinded that warrant article, so it's still in place. With that omnibus warrant article, that's what's referred to as, uh, the board can easily set up a student activity account, or any account of its choosing, that's contained within our auditable accounts. In other words, you can set up a different kind of account, but it's gotta be audited. Uh, he said, as long as it's audited and audited, he said, you should name the account, what you're doing there, so, in this case, he recommended like the playground renovation funds. To collect donated money for the renovation of the school playground, it's by the district fund, it is part of the annual audit process, that's what student activity accounts. For district policy K C D, the board must hold a public hearing regarding any action we take, it would be given five thousand dollars or more before it is expended. Remember, it's not when you accept it, it's when you expend it. As we are attempting to raise a hundred and fifty thousand plus, this will definitely be a requirement at some point down the road. So once again, in a nutshell, Dean says, because we have that warrant article, you, the board, are authorized to accept donations from anybody that fits into the category of, uh, it's, it's a near warrant article, you gotta read it again. State, federal, or other government unit or private sources which becomes available during fiscal year. So you can accept any donation from any of those organizations, and you have to then put that money into an account that will be audited. If you are going to expend that money, and it's five thousand dollars or greater, you have to hold a meeting for your regular board meeting, like you did before, with fifty-seven thousand dollars, to say to the community, hey, we got this unanticipated donation, and we're planning to spend one for a playground. He said, the reality though, the way everything's written, you can spend anything you want, but he says that would be not, that, that's not a good, you don't want to do that. So if the donations are coming in for the playground, that's where it should go, that's what it should be used for. Debbie did ask the question earlier, just like, what if we don't end up getting enough monies, or say we got five hundred dollars donated, that was it? As long as you do it on the playground, you're good to go, so if you buy something, you would spend that money on that item, and when that ran out, we'd use district dollars to pay the rest, that would be an okay, um, substitute for. Silly question. No silly questions when it comes to this one.
Since, since we just went through the anticipated fund thing, there was significantly more technology. If we went into this hearing and said, oh, we have these funds, and we set up this fund for this, technically, it's not anticipated funds, now it's a, it's a, don't spend that on the playground, it's a, it's a.
Dean's saying you can't. He's saying that the donation, if it's donated for the purposes of the playground, it has to be expended on the playground, like, it would be deceitful if you do anything else with it. So, the difference between that and the other. I don't wanna put words in his mouth, and I hate the word illegal, because there's usually legal loopholes to everything, I'm not a attorney, but.
I'm not saying that would happen.
It wouldn't be, I, I don't even think he said deceitful, I just think he said it would be like, so.
So, what Rob explained to me was, the playground, the playground committee is a separate entity, so, they would collect funds, and then they would donate it to the school. However, if other people were to donate directly to the school, they can, but the playground committee will at some point, if they want us to hold it, take that, take that money and donate it to this school to be put in that fund. Once it's put in that fund, playground committee does not own the fund, it's the district owners that owns, because I asked out, because the whole policy, like, people want their money back. And, that was a little bit different because, I guess, it was communication.
I'm not sure what the, I'm not sure what the promise was, but it, it didn't get followed.
Yeah, I mean, if you wanted to, there would have been a policy, and then there wasn't a policy.
That's what people want to hear back.
Ultimately, we have a playground, we'll continue to have a playground, and we'll make improvements to it, so we go back and fly.
The money will go to this lake. So the money, what is donated to the school is owned by the district, and the district, so if it doesn't go back, if like this plan falls through, there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it will still be used for the playground. May not be like replacing everything, because there may not be enough money for those students to enter, and it might take years to earn the money to do this project, so it might be, this may be several years before there's enough money to do it.
I think that, because there's gonna be money coming in from potentially individual donors, potentially businesses, potentially money that the playground committee raises, and since we're gonna be holding the money, I think it would be wise to either have, like, a little information sheet that goes out to people, or a tab on the website that just explains everything.
So what I explained to Debbie was, anybody that donates will log their donation, and will give them the policy.
Yeah.
And the intent of use of the money.
Okay.
Get me her on that, so, nobody should donate to us, the school district, without receiving that information. What I can't regulate is anybody else that's out there pounding the streets trying to raise money, I can't control what they're saying, I can't control what they're doing, but when they come to our door, the S A U, they walk up to April and say, hey, I've got a check for fifty thousand dollars. Number one, she's probably gonna, you know, smile and joke for a moment, and then, she's gonna take that, but she's gonna hand them and say, well, thank you for donating this money to our playground fund, here's our policy on donations, you can never get it back, and this is what the intent of the money is, we're gonna put it into this playground fund, and when we have enough money to do so, the board will seek to replace the playground as they see fit. So, once again, that's, that's the intent of it, but I can't control what other people out there are doing. You know, if, if part of this playground committed used to create a GoFundMe page, I can't double now, like, I can't control what's written on it, that's up to them. Um, remember government agencies, uh, grants, all these things are also positive funding sources for this as well, so, there's other options out here, I'm reading the playground presentation we had the other day. He talked about a very significant federal grant that's going on right now for playgrounds, he's just not sure if schools are allowed to collect, um, this for municipalities, and so he's just not sure, but we're looking to it, it's a possible funding source, so.
I mean, what are we thinking about putting the municipal playground out there?
Well, once again, we did say that in our town, this is the only real playground agency, you know, even though it's on school property, it really is a community playground, so that would be arguably a place, unfortunately, you know, bottom line, we're talking about the district, so, if it's not allowed, it's not allowed, it might have, so. But I wanna make sure you know, money can come from a lot of resources, because of the way you wrote that warrant article, what you're acting there.
And, but, if people make donations directly to the school, we can give them our tax ID number, and then Rob can do a research, so that people can, um, write about the donation.
Yeah, we'll definitely provide a receipt, and we provide our tax ID number, and then they can pursue that on their own, we're not obviously gonna do anything for them related to that.
Isn't, isn't there a playground meeting, is it tomorrow night?
I think it is, yeah. I've heard something about it.
All right.
All right. Plowing, do you have anything else on plowing, or are you good? Uh, the dam update, on November seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, the site selection committee recommended funding our dam removal project, which is very exciting to hear. Uh, the armed folks sent it on to the governor's council. Uh, they approved it at four hundred sixty-three thousand seven hundred sixty-four dollars, contributing to this project. Uh, let's see here, what else do we need? The U S Army Corps of Engineers agreed with the recommendation, and they have determined the project has to provide, um, a warrant. So now what's happening in, Monday, it's coming up, Monday. So we're having a Zoom meeting as opposed to an.
On Zoom?
It's on, it's on, you can come into the office.
Oh, I thought it was a meeting.
You can join the call if you want, but you can also be invited to a Zoom meeting. Uh, so Monday, we're having a kickoff meeting is what they call it, and in that meeting, they're going to, you know, obviously talk about the grant, talk about the award, and then they're gonna help us get rolling on the project ahead of us, which is getting, um, a federal litigation plan that has to be assembled to be put in front of the governor's council. So the engineers are joining that call. Debbie, Jess, and Eric, you were all invited. I don't remember your situation.
I don't think I'll be able to make it.
Okay, I just wanted to let you know that I invited both, because I couldn't remember how it finally, I know you originally were in, but Eric showed up in, so invited both. Uh, but well, there'll be enough of us there to get the feel for what we need, and it sounds like they really wanna work closely with us. Uh, I don't know, say that Arceda, uh, is our contact at the, uh, department. And so she's gonna be working closely with us, and, you know, I'm sure we'll make the deadline and get that into the governor's council in front of our upcoming meetings, and we'll get that final approval. Once that's done, I do know the next steps, which is once they approve us, and it takes a little bit of time, the state actually processes the money. But once they do, then that money is, comes available, they don't give it to you, I don't understand you, you don't like grand personal.
So the nice thing about having this before a budget plan.
Any questions on the dam? Good news so far. All right, next, the copier printer concern slash proposal, J K committee. Uh, April and I have definitely been experiencing this issue. Our printers and copiers are well beyond end of life. Over a million copies on the copiers, they're, they're, they're done. However, we are hoping to limp along through the end of the year, but we're getting to the point where we're already like repairing and uh, replacing components on printers and copiers just all the time. Most, sixty percent of Jay's calls are related to printers and copiers, um, so it's just a second and astronomical amount of time. The proposed budget for next year, like I said, is already covering this, as long as the budget gets approved, and that money's in there to take care of this, uh, upgrade. Jay successfully communicated with our provider, and they are willing to expedite this replacement process due to all the problems that are going on. They don't like them any more than we do. And what they're willing to do is to onboard that equipment, um, fairly quickly, like, probably by February, right, at the latest. Um, it would cost us an additional thousand dollars next year. Um, uh, but as Debbie was pointing out, we can most likely take that out of this year's budget and not have to defer that to a thousand dollars. I just wanted to let you know that, um, this is an option that's out there for us. Jay and I encourage it, but at the same time, we're completely appreciative of the fact that you may not want to do that. Um, it's just, um, it's becoming a problem. Quick, it's rapid and fast. It probably should have been done a year ago. And I remember Rob talking about it when he was here, but it just never made it to the head of his list, so.
So if we were to, if we could right now, if paid for right now, if we paid the initial, just a thousand dollars out of this year's budget.
It's a, it's a thousand dollars added to next year's budget, I'm sure we can pay for it out of this year's, that's the choice that the board wants. We have, like, already, we have one, we're not gonna spend it, so.
Rather than already go into next year's budget, which we just, we have to adjust again.
Do we know what the total would be? You have to quote it in the previous time period, I don't have it, it's in the, I'm trying to remember what I wrote in the time. I think I did with the U B O numbers, so let me take a look. I think that page did not make it in. I could definitely get back to you, I apologize. Um, but it's, you, you've seen the numbers before, it was part of the technology plan update, you had all that information there. So, but I definitely sent it, it was a wrong page, it was, it just kinda breaks down.
We can, if we want a way to risk the numbers, we can prove it, or we can add that to the, for next year, or shortening the warrant article for. What would it cost us this year? It's just a thousand dollars.
It would cost us nothing this year, technically. If we're saying, let's pay that additional thousand dollars now and not.
Oh, it's only a thou, it's only a thousand dollars.
What they said is, if they brought the equipment in right now, there'd be no charge to us beyond, we're already paying their company, but next year.
Sorry, I didn't understand.
So you wanna make a motion to, to approve bringing the equipment in now to pay the additional thousand dollars of this current budget? Okay.
I move, we authorize Rob to move forward with this, uh, plan to replace printers and copiers, as he's discussed with our printer and copying providers. And looking like it will only cost us an additional thousand dollars next year.
Um, what, what, are we paying for the thousand dollars out of this current budget?
To be paid, to be paid for from this current budget.
We have a second half of budget, and, and just to be clear, the only additional funds, other than what we have budgeted for next year, would be an additional thousand dollars. That we have a warrant that we would have identified, that we have not spent, so we have the funds currently in this year's budget.
I don't remember who that contract is, I don't know, we don't have like old stuff that we.
Oh, we might have some old stuff here that we're gonna have to get rid of. We've got stuff here, like, as Alex mentioned, in her, in our blog, where we've got stuff in this building, we're like, where did that come from? Like, it's not even covered on the current contract.
But our contract covers the new.
Stuff that we're, we're, oh yes, everything's included, it'll be all the same. So the copiers of both buildings will be the same, or relocation, whatever it is, will be the same. The printers will be the same, so we're not gonna have a dozen different cartridges sitting in the storeroom. Wondering, what does that one go to? Because that's what happens a lot. Plus, they, they monitor it remotely, so when the device reports that it's, think it's getting low, they will process the new cartridge to you. So it's very automated, neat, successful. And Jay's very happy with the U B O folks, now that he's found the actual right folks to talk to, and he's been very pleased to report their resilience. Not the other people that were eating against it, just providing, sending, whatever service, all the people's.
Okay. Trina?
Eric?
Yes.
Jess? Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes. All right, so, we'll get correspondence.
Hold on, Rob, there was, uh, the D C and the N Y C trips.
Oh.
Right above the dam.
I did, I skipped it, I apologize. Yep, so D C versus New York City trips. Um, I wasn't sure in the last meeting, if you recall, you said, what happened to the D C trips? I didn't know, I went back and, uh, spoke to Jeff, who then came in and spoke to the folks that are, that kind of run the shelter, which became one of us. And they, they talked about the last couple of years that they've been offering boat trips. Uh, but only the New York City has been the one that keeps winning. Um, however, in further conversation, we talked about that this year, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna send out a survey to the families, we'll make sure the survey describes each trip, what they would see, how long they'll be there, et cetera. So kinda like a fact sheet, if you will, on each of the trips. And we'll put it out as a survey to families, so that they can make those decisions at home with their kids. Uh, and obviously taking out the peer pressure component, things like that, that might be occurring.
All your friends raised against you, raised your hand type of.
They don't know New York, because they're, you know what I mean, like, we have done some.
D C is pre-COVID.
We did COVID, and that's all they know, because that's what's happened in here at the Washington.
I guess, have you played the send it up too, that like.
To the parents of the seventh graders. Yeah, to the parents of students of seventh graders, and say, hey, can you guys talk about this? Can you let us know if you think this is the right trip for you, et cetera, et cetera. That way, we can be proactive in planning and getting things arranged. Um, you know, World Strides was an example that we talked about, it's one that we've used before when we were going to D C and my previous districts. But these folks, they're gonna figure that all out, and they'll come back with proposals to the board to make sure that you're up to speed on what's, what's happening with that. But you think it's just gonna make sure that it's a better, you know, thoughtful decision, if you will, I won't say better, because it may be the exact same decision, it still might be New York City, but at least it'll be one that we know the parents were involved, and the students were making individuals, and so on. The other thing I was told was that way back, you guys used to go to Montreal, and it might be interesting for people to start talking about even more options. You know, and maybe even what, you know, rotational process, where we say, hey, maybe we go to different places, but once again, but right now, we're gonna keep it simple, New York or D C, and if we can stand beyond that, it's on point.
That was because, um, that was probably seventeen years ago. And before that, that was because we took a French, the kids.
To be clear, Montreal is one of the most silly towns. It really is, I mean, you get some real history when you go to Montreal, so it could be something that's need to do at some point in time. All right, did it miss anything else? Um, I don't think so.
Okay, so now we're at correspondence. Uh, we had, um, Asia wrote to us, our clerk, about, um,
Accessibility for.
We're supposed to be voting, we just held that.
It's on, yeah.
What's wrong, you know?
You wanna go audit? She's not done yet.
All right, so once we get that done, we will email that out, and then we will also post our audits, or audit on the website, right?
Yeah, she had several, I just wanna follow, she had several follow-up emails with me directly, just kinda querying why it wasn't done already. And granted, I think we all agree, we love the Dr. Earl's hearing, we're working in that direction. Um, however, I did talk to our auditors, I did talk to the attorney, and we're perfectly fine. The way our policy's written is it has to be done within a year. So we're still within that year, and, uh, the only way that we would have an impact would be is that we made, or we earned one, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in federal grants, which we did not. We had more than that, and we've had it audited by December thirty-first. So we are okay to not have been audited yet, it's just obviously our goal is to get audited as early as we can.
Okay, then we had, um, right, just an email. Access to administration and to Rob, and I think that was really the, working on, I think, they've been working on just.
Yeah, absolutely. So it was just really, we had a lot of complaints about the boys elected the five, six lunch. Uh, the approach was to say silence, uh, and we did. The idea was to go into, I guess, that first stage of the future that way. But a bunch of people met afterwards and discussed it, which didn't make sense, long before we saw these emails from folks. Um, and it was decided relatively, hopefully after that lunch was over, that a better approach would be to take it day by day. Uh, and to maybe start with a kind of provided approach, and more like when you first walk in, and then, and then escalate from the practice level zero, and then to a two. Um, and that, to really start targeting more individuals, students that are truly violating that. So as opposed to this kind of universal, everybody gets punished, really trying to individualize that, and have that look to be a much more impactful way of approach. And, and it's, Jeff was in there for a couple of days after that, because it's dramatically, students have responded well. And so once again, this concern, and I wrote back to him, he's very appreciative of my response, and that would change our approach.
And I think, you know, this is the, sorry, I think that's, it has been a big adjustment.
Without doubt, my response about is, the own personal situation was just that, you know, obviously, that's not our goal, is to have a child feel that way, and so you know, working with any child that's feeling stressed out by these changes, and, and instead of team meetings, we have conversations. Is there a way for the child to express what's most frustrating to them, so that we can address those things. I did respond with some of that in the email. Once again, he was very appreciative of the response.
I think it's, we'd like her, both being like, like, well, I'm starting to get the initial calls to the attorney, and, um, I think we're. Yeah, I think it's something that we should, we're gonna get through this season of budget stuff, that's starting to coach for, like, uh, I don't know, they have to talk before, but it's not that you don't know. Not middle school, it's a, it's free.
They're both waiting to get back in front of you guys, if you're okay. They, I just told them, I said, we can.
Yeah, no, exactly, that's what I'm saying right now.
But they're both waiting to do that, and I know for sure in March, you're gonna get the map update, but they both wanna talk about behaviors. Um, we've seen a lot of improvements in a lot of ways, and I think we swung the pedal maybe a wee bit too hard in a couple of instances. And that's what I'm working with them, and they're working with their leadership on, is to say, you know, let's get a little bit more balanced here. And I think, without a doubt, the parts are in the right place. The kids, I believe, are appreciative in most cases, because they're seeing a calmer, quieter, more respectful environment, and less fear of, I'm gonna get hurt, or there's gonna be something that happens that scares me. I think we've definitely seen massive improvement in that, but once again, potentially in a few areas, we swung just a wee bit too far, and we're trying to bring that back, and I, cafeteria was a perfect example of that, it was, it swung way too far, and but without even them experiencing it, it was already brought back. So even more, the next day when that lunch was gonna happen, and new plan had been established, and we were already on the record.
Just for, I think, we're aware, Eric, I think, for, it was only a few years ago that that, that we still, and we changed it because of the worst, and trying to, um, I think, did you remember, you want to record that on the business, versus you.
I. I, I was at least paying attention. I think it had to do with, um.
We had, I think we had like two grades of one and three of the other, so we were trying to do it where we decided to put the fifth and sixth grade together because bringing in one science teacher, one social studies teacher, one language arts teacher, and one math teacher. Years ago, um, before that, we had a fifth grade with the, with the elementary school, and we had one teacher that taught, you know, and one was a science teacher who was social studies, so all three taught math. But we did some leveling with those groups. So once we changed that model, and we realized we didn't have enough kids and teachers to have people who had expertise in every area, we put them together in the sixth grade. And we moved to an intermediate school, so it was like.
And by necessity.
It was, yeah. There's a lot of schools that have this.
The school used to be actually, thi- this whole center section wasn't here, so sixth grade was isolated, you know, sixth, seventh, and eighth were down here by themselves. So now fifth grade kinda is closer.
And also, we, um, just kind of like, you know, future, I'll plug out there. I'm curious what, um, I guess, teachers and administrations thoughts are on, because we currently have a homework policy in place, and I know that we wanna always prepare our middle schoolers, especially, I would say, seventh, and then eighth grade, or what's the current program? But, um, I'm curious about that transition period of fifth through sixth, from the elementary transitioning sort of into the middle school, what their thoughts are on that, like, do they see, there's so many philosophies out there, and I'm not a teacher, right, but like, what is, do they want there, do we need to change our homework policy, like, that age group? I see, I guess, I see a difference in, like, for them to be in K three, eight, our school hours are different than say a traditional middle school would be, so, um, you're, you know, typically, middle school would be on the bus earlier, and they're able to get home to their homework before they have sports or report center. I see the school bus, the school bus drive by my house, dropping kids off close to the school, you know, so it's like, it's just, you know, is that a stress that we're putting on our kids, that's not, uh, I guess, is the benefit of it outweighing the negatives? So just, I would be interested in like what the administrators or teachers thoughts are on that. I know we have a policy, and we kind of said, oh, they're, we don't have enough homework, but wait, it's something that can just be reevaluated.
It's one of the variables, it's swung too far, and it's coming back, and they're reminding. And they're finding a happier or middle ground. I think we have to be careful with the idea that they can accomplish everything in their six hours of instruction in a day. I think we have to keep in mind that what their homework is, read twenty minutes a night, practice math twenty minutes a night, or a specific worksheet, as to be clear now, might be they would compromise the conversation. But they have to do stuff outside of school, or they aren't gonna make the work. They just can't accomplish that kind of growth in six short hours a day. So there has to be a level or component of, we have to learn outside of these four walls involved in our system. So I know that every teacher would agree with the fact that learning can't be, jump on the back to the address, it's just a box. Um, but then again, I think we went potentially too far, particularly with the fourth grade. Because fourth grade really doesn't have homework. I know they can do a number of minutes a night, they do things like read and something like that. But this became real package, real worksheets, and it was probably too much to expect. So that's where I think we hold back, so better balance now is probably to refine more. But you're right, and it would be...
Fourth grade doesn't have homework. I just say that it's just a...
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's relatively, it's relatively small. And it's really more of that, like I said, reading, practicing, flashcards, things of that nature. So I mean, you should be getting that in first, second, third.
Yeah, no, it's just, um, I, just food for thought, you know?
It's a great conversation to have, it really is. And it's one of those that I think will be coming once we have time to actually have the people start trying this again.
Absolutely.
Or maybe there's a way to ramp it up. I think it's a big adjustment, it's a normal change to have with teaching.
Exactly. Well, that's just it, there's so many changes.
Well, that one's probably, yes, oh, so maybe it's an adjustment.
I think we also need to do a better job preparing the kids for that transition. I think this year, there was so much new happening that we were back up on this one. So I think starting to prepare on the fourth grade to understand those changes that are gonna be coming. Maybe even getting, I had a fun job about, is there a way for us to do a better step up process between fourth and fifth? So they get a little bit better appeal, you know, for what that's gonna be like, what that means. To give them a voice to talk about their fears and those sort of things. Because I think that whenever you transition, that's a transition, right? Fourth bit is a transition, just like eighth and ninth is a transition. They really need an opportunity to better understand it, ask questions, share their fears, alleviate their fears. I mean, that's another group that I don't think we potentially have done enough to support, is the parents. If they're fearful, it's gonna reflect on their childhoods, fears as well. There's a lot of change, a lot of change. And it all happened really fast without an experienced team, right? I mean, everybody was new.
I think it's a major space for some.
Oh, and just one other thing, um, I don't know if your team already, any thoughts is that you had mentioned at one point, maybe change, you know, for the thing, somebody had talked about, do you have the use of agendas? And I said, but that's already budgeting to continue to purchase, uh, agendas? Or is that something that they're thinking about changing now? I did see in correspondence from a teacher, talking about how they're, you know, they thought that's not great about using them this year. They're trying to prepare for next year to start using them. So I, and everybody, this was maybe a reminder, your comment, um, at one point about, you know, maybe that, I don't think we have a program anymore. Starting, everything's still electronic now. So at what point do we, there's a question that that's for now.
Because they all, and then they also use... Get a lot of communication, there are a lot of assignments for them.
I will ask about the agendas. I, I don't know how thoroughly they're used to. I know I've seen students' agendas, like, like they're open to a page or nothing.
They're probably Google or something.
Okay, all righty, so thank you, that was, that was good communication. All right, so we did that, um, community calendar. You're good, okay. All right, committee updates, any comments? No, we just, we probably got one scheduled.
We just, so...
Yeah, it's...
And I thank you both, Eric and Katrina. Thank you so much. And thoroughly. Yes, I know what you're saying, and you know, like, and you're both signing up again. Drug war punishment.
Yeah, no, Rob, that's great.
Okay, facility committee, you have been so busy. Oh, with the maintenance, oh my gosh, they know.
Yeah, what do you think?
Yeah, we, I'm hoping to have this tonight, this is important to me.
Okay, so the maintenance.
We had a meeting, but we pretty much discussed the slideshow that we showed you guys, and...
And one of the, that's where they did go out on January thirteenth. Um, I don't know if you have anything on that or not.
I don't know.
Great, that's great. So, okay, so on page forty-three, you have the job description. Um, I think it looks really great. I have, one of the things I, I noted, I wrote down, I know you have it in different areas. We had the minimum qualifications. Um, I know school custodian is important, it was just a tiny part, I mean, it was a small part of the job. But I was wondering if we would do something like, I guess you're implying, like, um, mechanical or experience in the trades? Because if somebody had been like a carpenter, or a mechanic, or, you know what I mean? Were there a person that's been working in the trades, rather than a school custodian experience?
Yes.
I would get the minimum qualifications. I just think it'd be nice to get somebody...
Oh, okay, yeah, it, yes.
In the trades, because we want to get somebody who can repair, so he's mechanical.
It does say an extensive experience addressing handyman and maintenance type responsibilities. It goes stronger than that.
And in our knowledge, skills, and talents? A broad base of knowledge, including carpentry, painting, masonry, door window repair, siding, HVAC, and tractor and side-by-side maintenance.
What if we put in the preferred, some experience, I don't know if you can, I guess you go up with the school counselor, school custodian? But I, I just, I know you're a handyman and maintenance, but I think in the trades, if that's, or mechanical aptitude.
And, and extensive experience in addressing handyman and maintenance type responsibilities.
Let's just say you had somebody that was, that had done some work. Maybe they were an apprentice for an electrician or a HVAC company. They were working fixing air conditioners or something. I mean, that, that somebody who has that mechanical aptitude, that can just repair. Most people who have that type of aptitude can repair things. And that's what I'm trying to...
No, this, this is what I, I wanted to capture too. I know, I know what you're saying.
So, I don't know, I mean, do we really just, we need to have experiences of school custodian?
Well, that was preferred because that's part of what they'll be doing. They've never been a custodian at all, and that, my worry was that they wouldn't know how to do those responsibilities.
Um, so may, maybe, maybe we should put, before the some experience as a full school custodian, we should put, um, whatever we're looking for for technical, which, or trades, which, um...
Experience in trades, or mechanical aptitude, I mean, if somebody...
Experience in the trades, the trade experience with mechanical abilities and experience in addressing handyman and maintenance type. I like the idea of the handyman and maintenance stuff being in there because that shows the well-rounded, you know, it's the well-rounded what we're looking for.
Um, additional experience as a school custodian.
The problem with the trades is this, unless they're qualified or certified, they can't actually use their trades. I'd be nervous about an electrician, because then they think they can go around fixing plate fixtures and stuff, and then we're gonna suddenly have a...
No, but it's, I, I, I understand what Debbie's saying, whereas if you have experience, not necessarily that we want an electrician.
Right.
But if you've worked as an electrician, you, it's the mechanical ability, you know? It's, it's tough to put into words.
And I don't know if it's narrow, I don't know if it's completely just kind of figure out as what is the actual...
I really feel like we can, words put this to doubt, but it's ultimately, it's gonna be what we're seeing in the end.
It's hard, yeah. I just couldn't put it in too much of a, okay, I don't know. I just wouldn't put the experiences of school custodian in there at the top.
Preferred, extensive experience addressing handyman and maintenance type responsibilities, some experience as a school custodian or equivalent would be probably...
Would be beneficial.
I don't, I don't wanna be too broad, and as far as anybody who just has a little bit of experience as a custodian thinks that... Or I don't want it to be too narrow where it makes it look like we're looking for a licensed electrician, you know? It's, it's a tough...
Ultimately, what I need here is I need a person that can kind of do all this, I want a jack of all trades. And I want somebody that's organized and thoughtful, hands-on. But I also need that person, when summertime comes, for example, to be able to organize a summer group to get the stuff done that needs to be gotten done. I need for this person to be able to, um, call the heat, HVAC person when the heat plant breaks to get that work done. Like, I don't want my deans or myself needing to call, you know, um, electric company because a meter's faulty. I want that person to do it. And so I really am looking for a person that's kind of like what we had, but without the management word. And I think the problem with the management word is it gives a sense of, I'm not hands-on, I'm at a desk. And what I'm looking for this time around is somebody that's very much hands-on, that has some additional responsibilities to do a little bit of management here and there. Make sure the evening custodian schedules in place, make sure the summer schedules in place. Contact the company if they need to come in and do some of that maintenance work instead of you doing it. That's what I need, but that's not management, that's, that's what I consider to be a maintenance person.
So somebody who has some starting, some starter.
And my worry is, you know, are we gonna find someone? My hope is yes, I hope the economy's not so strong that nobody's able to work this, but...
There is one, the very last bullet on page one there.
Yep.
This position will require some custodial duties when needed. Um, ma- maybe just take out the word some to, to just say custodial duties as needed. Um, that, I'm just thinking maybe someone would think that maybe, oh, well, I only have to do some custodial duties, you know? But, so some custodial duties as, I'm sorry, custodial duties as needed. I think that would, um...
So the qualifications, putting custodian second, and then the last bullet, those changes need to be explained.
Yeah.
So the preferred qualifications is to have, right? Preferred experience as a facilities maintenance technician and custodian. Facilities maintenance technician, right?
Do you think there are people, would that eliminate people that are just...
Yes.
Handyman and, and know how to maintain things?
You're saying we're, you know, it's a minimum qualification is this number of years of experience essentially facilities maintenance. So, I don't think that necessarily excludes, if you see a resume that's preferred, even basically what you're saying.
Yes.
It's preferred, it's not required. I'm assuming we're gonna get a lot of people looking to why that may not meet the requirement. Like, I can imagine people thinking, oh, I'm assuming I'll be a full-time custodian, and that's not the case. I mean, correct, still do work can be quite challenging, but we're looking for beyond custodial. We're probably looking for, like you said, that maintenance. If we include addressing handyman and maintenance type responsibilities, that on the door at my house, I'm qualified. But if you put in facilities maintenance technician, custodian, you're kind of looking for... Not necessarily a specific skill set, but someone who knows how to manage the building. So simplified after preferred to just facilities maintenance technician and custodian? I think that's, I agree.
Did you put handyman in there too?
He said, I'll take that out.
Well, no, I, I disagree, I have to, I have to disagree with this because if we were not necessarily looking for somebody who's only had experience in a facilities, in doing maintenance inside of a facility, you know, I know plenty of people who have the trade experience they were talking about that could handle this job, uh, but have never worked as a facilities technician. So I, I don't, I think that's going a little too pigeonholed yet.
I like the handyman, um, to include that, I mean, you could add the other thing too, but I like...
So how about facilities maintenance technician and custodian with extensive experience addressing handyman and maintenance type responsibilities?
It's putting facilities technician first. I think pigeonholes it.
So then how about extensive experience addressing handyman and maintenance type responsibilities? Um, with some experience as a, as a custodian, an example, facilities maintenance technician.
I like that. It captures it.
Okay, does that work?
Yeah, one of the things I noticed...
Swear, guys, who comes out of the interview, I don't think, like he says, we're not turning too many people away from the actual interview process for this, because I'm wondering how you believe a lot of them read it, right? Whether they're gonna read is what we put on our website, which will be a highlight. Everything's very carefully, and I don't think, most people indeed are just saying, what was the job available? Oh, no, scroll down, I don't know why.
And, and I, my hope would be that when we post this, sort of, we can share it via school communication button or something. It would be great for them.
Oh, you, really? We didn't put anything, remember we talked about, um, a distance that they, they had to get here within a certain time period?
Oh, yeah.
We don't want people from L O A, and again, you know, when we need to have a shovel or something, or there's no power. Also, I don't see that they need to have a driver's license. Don't they need to have a driver's license? Do they need to go and pick up materials when needed?
Does it, I think the person will be able to, travel.
Okay.
File a, yes.
Okay, so it does say that, okay.
It doesn't specifically specify a driver's license. If you'd like me to add that to the, to all occasions, that's probably a good thing.
So what were we just saying about the...
First, the emergency.
Yeah, so it says, very important to be the person to show up in the morning to that driveway and that competition. Doesn't say it's a great... So could, um, should we put something, should be able to, um, be at the, at the facility with a twenty, a twenty-minute drive for emergency situations or something?
I almost did the same.
Yes.
Yeah.
I would say thirty is where we have to start. And I don't know how to say emergency, but it's like, okay, if the power's helping, it's a greater...
This seems to work absolutely well.
Yeah. Figure out, we should put something, I, I don't, I don't think we need to, I know we just have people that are closer administrators, and we rely on them because everyone else was in a way, that'd be nice to...
We experienced it a little bit in that storm last, last April. I think, I don't remember, I was on a phone call with you, Bob, or we were texting, but it was like, do you know if anybody's able to get to the school to...
Lars, Lars has built in for us on that on a few occasions now. That was what happened last April. He came out, checked the building, reported back to us what his situation was. I can't remember if we had to fire up the generators or not, I don't know, it's cold enough to worry about that. There was a freak storm.
Yeah.
It wasn't about, I'm sure it was more about a freak storm, it was April. So I'm not sure we had to fire up the generators, but that would be the place where I'm most worried. It's January fifteenth, negative forty degrees outside, and power goes out, and we have to have somebody out here to get that generator hooked up and nurse it, right? You gotta stick, gotta stick by it. So having somebody that lives five minutes down the road is easy, they can go home, they can sleep for a few hours, set an alarm, come back, fill some gas in, double check, and it's still running, that kind of thing. Me, I'm coming out, I'm just coddling you in my office, so...
We have, we have the ability to run the urgent rates or something?
That's why I wanted to rinse the generator. So when we lost power last year, we rolled the milk coolers out to the end of the kindergarten wing, out to the edge, we didn't go outside, but out to the edge of it, and we had the generator that was running... out to the edge, we didn't go outside, but out to the edge of it, and we had the generator that was running the heat plant has plugs, so we actually ran extension ports from it to the coolers to keep them going. So, we have the ability to keep the milk cold, but what a pain that was.
We lost a lot of milk because...
Well, but, yeah, it's because we weren't here when, sometimes when the power goes out, we're not here, then yes, that's what's gonna happen. We were here when the power went out, and that's where we were at to save the milk. Yeah, we, we really need a generator, we really need an emergency auto-on generator, but it's down the road, it's...
So, can we just have, figure out, just put something here, um...
How about the minimum qualifications, current driver's license, and next to it say preferred, like the other preferred, preferred, somebody local that can get to the school, reasonable amount of time, can address, whatever. Can you make something like that? Is that what I said?
Yep.
So, it'd be under the minimum qualifications, and it'd be next to the preferred. So, we already have that other preferred statement, I'll put this as another preferred statement. Or radius or time.
I, I would put, um, the current individual was able to to arrive at the facility in a timely manner when needed, or something like that, that they can, like, find out.
Fifty, forty-five. It's been some traffic. Am I right? It's not until I hit to the back roads of Strattler that I feel like, every road's twenty-five miles an hour.
Yep. It's like, there was a period there, but almost everything was answered. Did you see them? Anyway, okay, it's gonna relate.
I'll post this tomorrow, so if you guys...
For a, we can, um, motion to approve with the additions?
I immediately approved this job description for facilities and grounds maintenance as, uh, with the, with the changes as discussed.
Okay, that's a good one, ready discussion?
I wanted you to see what they would be getting offered. It's, we have a range, we said twenty-five to twenty-seven, I just put a placeholder in here, so, yep.
And I'm gonna go back to that, okay, let's, let's go over this one, okay, Katrina, Eric?
Yes.
Jess? I'm just going to, and Debbie, yes. To go back to the contract, I, I know that the rate that you put up there was twenty-five, which I actually think...
It was just a placeholder, this is a...
I actually think depending on the individual and, and what is known and the ground to show and the skill set that the person has, that it might be nice to say, you know, within six months, if we've been changing, to show that, you know, something actually can maintain and repair things, because like you said, I, Kyle's on the door, and if he, if he that filed, says, you know, has the job, so we made that person, and then we realize that's all...
I also... Eric's saying, I've replaced engine in my...
Yeah, there you go.
You know, not called right this job. Okay.
Anyway.
So, add some sort of statement about within the six-month probationary period, at the end of that six months, uh, meeting expectations will result in a pay increase, should I put twenty-seven, or should I say? Misread, but you're right.
We got the range, I think the discretion is on you. I believe.
So, I'll make it vague as to what that could be, but there'll be a six-month probation with, um, meeting expectations resulting in a pay increase. I won't get specific about it.
That's one other reminder.